And so I'd like to welcome you to the end of your work session again. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our past president, Ms. Jody Foley.
Hello, everyone. I hope you can hear me. Welcome, everyone. It looks like we've got just about everyone, so that is fantastic. We are going to have a busy meeting, but with lots of good stuff. So with that, I'll just call everything to order. And we'll move to our first agenda item, which is a presentation by the folks from Ancestry. I'm hoping they are on the line. If you are, go ahead.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you again for allowing us to be a part of this work session with you guys. We continue to support COSA and acknowledge the important role that your organization makes in our business. And we're glad that everyone's doing well. And we're just going to take a few minutes, like we have previously, just to share some thoughts and a couple of updates with the rest of the team and COSA participants here. I know we've all had some challenging times, and Ancestry is no different. The COVID pandemic affects everyone. And we continue to strive to provide access to our user base. And it's the records that we've worked with many of you on that allow us to do that. We've been impacted. Our offices around the world have been closed, for the most part. We are reintroducing some things, but certainly our onsite scanning operations, that are usually around the globe, have slowed down. But even with that slowing, we've really made a concerted effort to continue to publish new records every month. And we hope that this year is going to be bigger, as any year we've had, in terms of publishing those records. We've seen COVID-19 has really forced everyone inside. And for Ancestry, that's been a part of a good thing, because people have more time to sit in front of their computers, to search and be involved in more online sort of things. And that gels quite well with our business plan, as you may imagine. And we've seen somewhere between, at its peak, a 15% to 20% increase in usage over these COVID months, if we'd like to use those. But we continue to try and find unique ways of getting access to and awareness to the records that we have from many of your institutions, like I said. And one of those ways is that we've come up with a, what we've called the K-12 program. We're offering upwards of 10,000 free six-month subscriptions to educators across America and to allow them the access, the free access into those records, so that they can use those for educational purposes as well. I'll put a link to that on the chat, so that if anyone's interested, they can go to that site and learn more information about that. But we want to make sure you guys understand the breadth and range of access that we're providing. I was going to share a screenshot, but I can just probably share the words with you instead. But I took it as an example, in the state of New York, there's a census that I pulled up. And the census collection we used was, I believe, and let me just get to that point quickly here.
I believe it was 1892.
Yes. We took the 1892 census as an example. And over the last few months, from somewhere around March to current, that collection's had about three, almost three and a half million visits. And of those visits, only 25% of those visits actually come from New York. The rest of those, 75%, come from outside of the state and various states around, including Florida, California, Pennsylvania, New Jersey. But aside from that, outside of the US, and this goes not only to this census, I'm using this census as an example, but for all of the collections we have. This is fairly typical, as we see usage across the world. And it varies, obviously, depending on the countries and the number of user bases we have there. We have a lot of countries, another 40 different countries, that are accessing this one particular collection as well, from Canada, Germany, Ireland, Sweden, France, Belgium, the Philippines, Japan, Mexico, Italy, Israel, Puerto Rico, the Isle of Man, Ecuador, Austria, Chile, Peru, Poland, Egypt, Malaysia, Portugal, Uruguay, Indonesia. I just wanted to share that a little bit with the group here, just because I think it's important to understand the breadth of access that your records are receiving on Ancestry. And not only from those who are residents of your state and not only those who are citizens in the US or reside in the US, but across the world, these records are being utilized in ways that we've seen and we've presented videos to you many times and may do so again today. Let's show you how these records are being used. So in this time where we're under these restrictions with this COVID-19, I think it's important to understand that there's still access occurring, even though some of your facilities are limited in providing access and traffic online. We've seen an increase, and certainly the breadth of access to these records is worldwide. And we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. I have access to these reports. If any of you are curious about any particular collections you have, please reach out to myself or Brian, Craig, or Quentin, depending on who you may associate with. And we can provide these reports occasionally that will show you some of that, if that's an important aspect in your data business. But again, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of a sponsor of COSA. And we've enjoyed this thoroughly and continue to look forward to many more years and providing important services, not only to you, but to the user base that we have as well. I'll turn a few minutes over to Brian Peterson, my colleague, who will add a couple of comments, and then we'll end with a video, as we usually do. But again, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Jared. It's been a lot of fun to just see how dire circumstances can sometimes bring out some good and some unique opportunities where challenges may have existed. And so we've enjoyed that, seeing those changes. We hope you've seen some of the same organizations. One of the things that we do miss very much, however, is being there in person with you. That's very much a highlight of our year. And we do miss seeing you in person and meeting some of the new archivists and new folks. But hopefully, next year, we'll be back again and have that opportunity. One of the things you may have heard about, that's been in the news a bit the last few weeks, was the acquisition of Ancestry. And that's something that I would assume most of you have heard about. All of the news articles make it sound like that acquisition has already taken place, when in fact, it's just the intent to acquire. And that is by the equity firm Blackstone. And that will most likely take place in the next three to four months, give or take a little. That is the intent. But as of this point, due to what it looks like on the news articles and the various things, that is not a done deal at this point. What it will mean for us are no significant changes in operations or in personnel that we're planning on. Privacy and security are still at the forefront of our focus and our commitment to customers and to you, our partners. And there are some possible upsides. Blackstone is very excited about our possibilities. They are focused on our core, which is the family history market. They're very excited about the content and the opportunity to possibly expand what we do, both within the United States and internationally. So as far as us internally, we feel good about it. We're excited about the change. For me, it's about the fourth ownership change that I've gone through at my time in Ancestry. And so it's not a scary thing at all. We see some opportunities for growth and things moving forward. So it shouldn't fundamentally change anything that we're doing with you and the way that we work together. We're still on the hunt for valuable records and content, maybe even a little more so. If there are core records that we've worked together on, and you may have acquired additional record sets in military or vital records or nationalization, immigration kinds of records, or other things that we've worked with you on, but you now have acquired more, we'd love to chat with you about those and to see if there are additional things we might do together. If you have prison records or voter records or different kinds of things that you would love to consider getting digitized and that would be of interest, we're interested in those. And if any of you who are Ancestry subscribers, hopefully, have seen a little bit of a shift, and it will be ongoing, to more of a story-oriented approach, to giving a little bit more backstory and context to the individuals, to the ancestors that you find and build out in those trees. And so that's a little bit of the direction that we're going and some of the things that are happening, in addition to what Jared's mentioned. Just wanted to see, are there any questions specifically for Ancestry? I'm going to take a couple, and then I'm going to just introduce a video and a project that Quentin's been working on. I see the question, what's the Blackstone Group hoping to achieve by this acquisition? It's interesting, because Ancestry is their first-ever acquisition. They usually do hedge funds and some of those kinds of things. And this is the first time they've acquired a company. As we have had a chance to meet and spend a little bit of time with them, several of the owners of Blackstone are and have been Ancestry subscribers for eight, 10 years. And so I think there was some interest there. As a company, we've grown every year for the last 20 years. And I think they see an unmet potential in Ancestry. And I think, as they've talked, very much looking long-term, whether that means at some point, they may go public or not, we don't know. But their intentions, that they've looked at us, were that they love the business. They want to expand it to a bigger market. And they love what we're about and the mission and the purpose of Ancestry, is what we've been communicated by them, the reason why they jumped in. Ancestry kind of put itself out there, and from what I'm told, there were quite a few different possibilities. But their love of and vision for Ancestry was what the current owners felt best fit the company. And so as they made that option to Blackstone to purchase, it was because of that and those values being met. I don't see any more, so I'm going to move on really quick, just to introduce a project. Over the last several years, we've been signing agreements and working all over the world to support the growing family history business. And in the last couple of years, we've really tried to look at and see what opportunities to do some philanthropic work in saving and preserving historically significant archives or record sets that may be at risk. And one of those that we've worked with and has been identified was the largest Holocaust archive in the world, the Erleston Archives in Germany. It was formerly known as the ITS, the International Tracing Service. And we just completed publication of these records this week. And those are now being made available for free in perpetuity to anyone in the world. We recognize the role and the support that all of you play in preserving the past and whatever corner of history it may represent. Those records are someone's history. And so we're happy to do it on a small scale with you, and in this case, on a large scale for a body of records that has the potential to really preserve some valuable and sensitive history. The following video, you'll see Quentin in it. And I think it was made by CNN. It's a great big story. Many of you are probably familiar with those. And that is something that we would like to share with you now, if we can get that to work. I'm hoping Rebecca or Lisa, one of you can hit play and make that happen.
Hi there. This is Jody. It's looking like the audio will not come through on the video. We've been trying behind the scenes.
Okay. I didn't know if that was just for the presenters or for the host as well, since you had that, so...
Right. No, I'm so sorry. And I hope everyone, we did send a link out, so I hope everyone will go ahead and look at that video. It is amazing.
All right. Well, I do encourage you all to do that. Copy that link and paste it now, so that when the meeting's over, you don't lose that in a web browser. And then take a chance to watch that, because it is a very powerful and significant thing. And we're grateful for the ability to work on some of those kinds of projects. And again, as Jared mentioned, I'll just echo, we love working with you. We feel honored and grateful to be a part of the COSA community and looking forward to, hopefully, a less chaotic year until next summer, when we see you again. But in the meantime, we look forward to reaching out to you and seeing what additional projects we might work together on in the meantime. So from Ancestry to COSA, thank you very much.
Likewise. Thank you so much for all the great information and for the great projects that you're moving forward on. And of course, we love working with you folks too and hope that's a good, rich relationship for and to the future.
Thanks, Jody.
Of course. And one of the things that we'd like to talk about next is related to Ancestry's support. This is the Ancestry Leadership Award recipient, Lace Johnson from Idaho. And she'll be talking about the project that they worked on and how they got it completed. I think you'll find it very interesting. Lace?
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. I'm pleased to be here with you all today. I want to say thank you all for the recognition this year for the Ancestry Leadership Award. It was very heartwarming to have received that. But I did not do the project alone. There were many, many people, many, many moving parts that I wanted to share with you all today. I also had a video that I was hoping everyone would see, which is just a short, little blurb of the project. And there's actually a full-length, hour-long video as well that you can find, I think, in the same link through Idaho Public Television. They were one of our partners with this project, and they did a wonderful job capturing, from the beginning to the end, this project of restoring the Idaho State Constitution, or I should say conserving the Idaho State Constitution. So I am going to start at the beginning with the project. So, gosh, quite a few years ago, Michael Davidson, who was my predecessor as collections archivist here at the Idaho State Archives, had noticed the deterioration of the state constitution. And after she left to go on her next journey, I ended up landing in her position and wanting to continue that project. In 2016, I had the opportunity to work with Randy Silverman, when he was participating in West Pass. And he had come to Idaho to give us all wonderful presentations and trainings on disaster recovery, which is such a big topic right now as we're dealing with Hurricane Laura and will be continuing trying to rescue these assets. So my thoughts go out to everyone who's affected by the hurricane. And thank you all for being here today, the ones that are here from Louisiana. And so just another reminder that these things don't always last forever. And so preservation and conservation is such an important role that archivists have. So after a few years of knowing Randy, we kind of focused back on this project. And I worked with our development director at the time, Ryan, to work with the Foundation for Idaho History to do a fundraising event to raise the funds to conserve the Idaho State Constitution. Randy and his team of two, Stacy came up with him, his paper conservator, and they came and did an assessment for us back in October of 2018. And he gave us a pretty good figure of what to go for for fundraising. And so we had an event, and we were able to fundraise for that project and be able to pay for it. It wasn't until about a year later that we delivered the Constitution to the University of Utah Marriott Library and Randy Silverman's preservation lab. And his team worked very carefully on this document for us. It is the most important record we house at the Idaho State Archives, which is why we wanted to take so much care and work and work with professionals like Randy Silverman and his team to help conserve it. In these pictures, you'll see two pages, the preamble and the Article 1, the first page of Article 1. And they were both laminated, which in about the 1930s, William J. Barrow had developed this lamination technique, which became the standard in the mid-20th century of paper conservation. Record conservation was laminating with cellulose acetate film documents. And this was across the world internationally. Lamination was becoming quite common, if you could afford to do it. Library of Congress had laminating capabilities, National Archives. So it was not something that was unique to us. It was something that had become sort of a standard for conservation. Now conservators look at anything that is done, they need to be able to undo it. So they went back to the old ways of preservation, which is using wheat starch as glue adhesive and other things that could be undone. This lamination technique was something that was not an easy thing to undo. And so we had the team at the preservation lab do many tests, chemical tests for the properties of the film and the inks and the paper to make sure that whatever we did with it, it would not impact it further. That was one of the biggest sort of nervous parts of this project, was I didn't want to make a decision that did further damage to the document. Sometimes the best conservation is to not do anything. And so I'm very conservative here at the Idaho State Archives and focused on preservation more than conservation, because really, this belongs in the hands of conservators. But also, knowing that a previous technique for conservation was why this ended up so damaged, had me really consider this as whether or not we should go forward with delaminating the two pages. So what they did eventually was to put it in an acetone bath, the two pages that had been laminated, and very carefully remove the pages and put it back together. And so it was a really painstakingly slow process. And that was all filmed. So if you are able to watch the full-length video, you'll see that part of it where Stacy's in the lab, working with the materials. So these two pages are those that have issues. And then the other page, you can see the bindings failing, so the text box coming out of the page. And at the very top, you'll see the evidence of the previous covers. So the very original way that the Idaho State Constitution had been bound in 1889 was these three holes you see in the center. The next, we believe, is maybe one of those prong binders that have a series of six holes at the very top. And then the most recent is this black cover that was probably, I think Randy said he thought maybe it was 1960s or 70s, that maybe that cover looks about that era of just a standard sort of binding. Nothing special to it. But so this is where we kind of started with for the project. In October of 2019 was when we flew the Constitution to the Marriott Library. And we were greeted by Governor Herbert Ken Williams, who you guys all probably know, Utah State archivist. And he's kind of in the background of the image on the left. You'll see him. And then Randy Silverman, Janet Gallimore, our director here at the Idaho State Historical Society, Bill Manny, who is the producer from Idaho Public Television, and Governor Brad Little is in the image on the left side. And then myself, Janet Gallimore, and Stacy McKelley, who worked as the paper conservator on the project, were going over some things, details of what that project might entail. So despite all of the technical pieces of the preservation of the record itself, there are a lot of logistical issues involved, too. I had to work with the risk management team for the state of Idaho to determine whether or not I could leave with the Constitution out of the state, how best to transport it, figuring out that insurance piece, as well as working through the contract with the University of Utah. And all those logistical pieces, it really did take about a year or two to figure out all of the kinks. There was a hiring freeze in Utah for a few months. And so we were waiting on the bookbinder, Mark Anderson, who is out of Tucson. He was coming onboard to help with the cover. And so we kind of had this waiting pattern for a while. But we successfully delivered it. And then in December of 2019, I was able to go down midway through the project to see the success of the delamination. And that's the image you see on the right, is the preamble in its final form. On the left side, we had the opportunity to look at the Nigerian goat leather that they used for the cover of the Constitution and some of the stamping that they were trying different things out with the gold lettering and design elements. And in the middle, you see the Constitution is completely separated out, and they're starting over with Japanese tissue and wheat starch to create the binding. And then Stacy in the middle, of course, working in the delamination of the document. So it was a really, really rewarding project. And in February, I was able to go pick up the Constitution right before COVID and everything shutting down. And I was able to bring the Idaho State Constitution back to Idaho. And the picture below is with the Foundation for Idaho History and the Chief Justice of the Idaho Supreme Court in the center. He was there to help greet us, and we're in Governor Little's office. So we were able to celebrate that when we came back in February, just in the nick of time to get it home safely. I came back on Delta with the Constitution. It had its own plane ticket, and we were able to get it home safe and sound. So that's really the project, in a nutshell. A lot of moving parts, a lot of patience and waiting game, and a lot of sleepless nights, hoping that everything was turning out okay. So thank you, everyone, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Lace. That looks like it was a really fun project, very multifaceted. We'll just say that.
Yes.
Congratulations on your award, again. Very well deserved.
Thank you.
Right. So let's move to some reports and discussions, activities and projects, as our agenda says. And the first one is going to be on the State of State Records Survey and Reports. And Veronica Marksle will be doing that. Veronica?
Thank you, Jody.
Can you do this?
Just a second as I get everything up here.
Perfect.
Okay, next page, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. As Jody said, my name is Veronica Marksle and I will be reporting out today on the status of the FY 2020 Archives and Records Management Survey, COSA's biannual snapshot on the State of State Archives and Records Management Programs. I want to open by acknowledging that a biannual survey is a big ask. And on behalf of COSA, I would really like to thank everyone in advance for your participation. The FY 2018 survey started a process of streamlining the survey. And I hope that you'll find that the changes that the FY 2020 Committee has made have made this a much easier, quicker, and more manageable process. This year, we will be using a new survey tool called SOGO Survey. We've broken the survey into shorter parts. And you also do not need to complete each part at one time. You can now save and return to the survey later. You'll have the ability to forward the survey link to someone else for their input. They can enter their responses and save their progress and you can pick it up from there. We will also be pre-filling in some fields based on your answers from the FY 2018 survey. And we sincerely hope that that makes this an easier process. The section most greatly impacted by the pre-filled field is the Authority, Resources, and Activity section. In the previous surveys, these were represented by four grids, asking about your level of authority, resources, and activity related to executive, legislative, judicial, and local government agencies. SOGO Survey does not support a pre-filled grid view, so those grids have been converted into individual questions. On the downside, it looks a lot longer, but it's really not because it's all going to be pre-filled with your data from the FY 2018 survey. If you've had no changes in those categories since the last survey, just review the answers to make sure I've entered them all correctly and you're done with that section. An added benefit, especially for those of you who may be new to your positions and this is your first time doing the survey, with the pre-filled data, you'll be able to see what was entered last time and you can decide if you agree or if you want to change what has been entered. The one caveat I do have is that there is a maximum number of fields that can be pre-filled in any given survey. So we've actually had to break the second survey into two parts. And unfortunately, we realized that after this slide was made. So you'll actually be receiving links for six surveys, but more about that in a minute. We will also be sending out a slimmed-down survey for records management-only programs. I'll be reaching out to the state archivists in those states that have separate programs to ask your preference of whether you would like to receive the records management-only survey to forward to your records management counterpart or if you would like the survey sent directly to them. I'll also be confirming with you who that contact is to be. Little bit about what to expect in the next couple of weeks. You will be receiving an email from me with a PDF copy of your FY 28 completed survey. For some states that submitted multiple surveys, I am compiling the answers into a single document the best I can. But honestly, there are cases where there's conflicting data. My apologies in advance for any misinterpretations I may make. But hopefully, having the ability to share and save the survey this year will mean that we will only have one definitive survey for each responding entity, which will make the reporting and follow-up a whole lot easier. As I mentioned before, you will be receiving six, not five, individual surveys from the Survey Survey Tool. We have had a little bit of an issue with one of the committee members having their state email system block the survey as junk mail. So be doing what I can on the backend to make sure that all the surveys are delivered. But if you received that initial survey, initial email from me with your FY 2018 survey and then don't receive your survey links in the next day or two, please reach out to me and let me know and we'll figure out what's going on. Additionally, we will be posting blank copies of the survey instruments to the COSA website for your reference. For a little context of how we've broken the survey up into smaller bits, Survey One's going to be that basic institutional data contact information as well as fiscal information and staffing information, as I mentioned. Survey Two is now split into two parts. The first part is just the pre-filled Authority, Resources, and Activities for executive and the legislative offices. So really, that should be pretty quick. You just, if there haven't been any changes, you just review it and submit it and you're done. The second part is going to be a little longer. That contains the judicial and local governments' pre-filled section of Authority, Resources, and Activities, as well as the questions on Archives and Records Center holdings and Arrangement and Description. That first bit for judicial and local government should again be pretty quick if there haven't been any changes and you just want to review the pre-filled fields. But the rest obviously is going to take you a little bit longer to do. Survey Three is Reference Use in Archives and Records Management Programs, Communications and Social Media, and Archival Impact. There are some new questions here, especially around records management reference and support activities. And obviously, when it comes to reporting out on this section in the upcoming report at the end of this, I will be providing a lot of contextualization of the numbers in light of the pandemic, which will undoubtedly upend these responses for reference in similar activities. Survey Four is Emergency Preparedness, Response, and Recovery. And again, not surprisingly, here you'll have some new questions as well regarding your institution's response and ongoing recovery during the COVID-19 pandemic. Finally, Survey Five covers Shrub Activities. There is a little bit of overlap into similar activities that may be carried out by your institution as well. For example, you know, we often think of re-grant programs as being associated with shrubs, but maybe your institution sponsors them as well. And we want to get a little bit of data on that. Okay, timeframe. You should be receiving your surveys very soon, early September, basically, or next week. In late September, early October, I'll be working with the COSA staff to have basically some ad hoc open meetings where if you have any questions, you're struggling with a section, you just want to, or you just want to provide some feedback a little early or talk through some things, basically being available for you to help support as you're doing the, as you're filling out your surveys. We do have a survey due date of October 31st. And I realize that is a very aggressive timeframe, especially with elections coming up. But I'm hopeful that having the shorter surveys with pre-filled fields will make that an attainable goal. Remember, you can submit each individual survey by itself. So say you've got ten minutes, review Survey Two, Part One, confirm the answers, and submit it. And that's one of them taken care of and done. That being said, we all know there's always a little squishiness around those deadlines. The goal for the report is going to be in early 2021. And finally, I just want to take a moment to thank the committee members who put in a lot of time reviewing the FY 2018 survey, making recommendations, trying to, again, streamline as well as, you know, testing out new software options and really just providing amazing feedback all around. Thank you also very much.
Veronica, there is a question in chat from Lori Ashley. Any new questions on IT support for the State Archives and/or to figure out whether the state has a centralized executive branch IT unit?
That is not an area that we have specifically addressed in this. There is one new question that deals a little bit, sort of tangentially deals with IT, but it's actually more to do with as the federal government is moving towards a mandate for digital only, are we starting to see that among any of the states? So, you know, probably not seeing it now, but we kind of want to get that out there as a question to start a baseline to see if that becomes a trend over time or if it stays something that just happens at federal level.
Thank you very much, Veronica. I'm not seeing any additional questions. But I did want to extend my thanks to all the committee members. I know this was a huge lift and all of you did really great work and were very conscientious. I heard quite a bit about it as it was happening and there was a lot of things to work on. So thank you very much for that. And just a reminder to folks that this report that comes out, the date, I should say, is really helpful. It's helpful to gauge where you are in comparison to some of the other states. I end up using it as a way to validate projects or get the legislature to listen to projects saying, see, this is what's happening in another state and this is why we're doing this, underscoring best practice. So thank you very much. Great project. So we're going to move on now to the Call to the States, another great project and a lot of great information that is pulled from that. And this report's going to be given by Ann Atkinson. Ann?
Hey, everybody. I'm really happy to be with you today and to do a little reporting on the Calls to the States. And I have a couple of infographics to show you that give you some of the, some of the highlights of these conversations. I think the, one of the amazing things about COSA is that it, every year, and this has been done for, I don't know how many years, at least a decade, decade and a half, maybe even longer, the Board of COSA takes on the job of reaching out to state and territory archivists every year to talk with them and to gather information from them. And the information that you provide, Board members, comes back into COSA, gets compiled, and then sent back out to the Board. And we take a good, long look at it. Staff members take a good, long look at it. We're focusing on what you're telling us, your suggestions. And we move forward on many of the suggestions that you have for us. So I want you to know that it's a really important activity for COSA and your information helps us move forward. And we've also heard from many of you that you really appreciate those calls, that you really feel as though someone does care and is listening to you. And so it's really kind of a win-win activity. So this year, the calls were conducted between April and July. And many of the responses we got really reflect the fact that everyone was in the early stages of dealing with the pandemic. We, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about how it was going to unfold. There's still a lot of uncertainty about how it's going to unfold. But what you're seeing on the screen right now tells you that that the percentage of states, territories, and the District of Columbia reporting came in at 75%. That was 42 contacts that were made. And not surprisingly, 97% of you reported that you had increased online records access and records and program access in response to COVID-19. The percentage of COSA members reporting continued progress in managing electronic records and digital preservation stood at 76%. So that was very heartening to hear that in all of this kind of chaos, work was continuing to move forward in the area of electronic records. The big donut there of funding outlook is not a pretty picture. As I mentioned, we're early, the calls came earlier on this, a little earlier on this year, when a lot of you members really didn't know what your state budgets were going to, going to look like. But most of you had a pretty good idea that it wasn't going to be good. And so what this particular chart shows is that 32% of reporting State Archives felt that, at least at the time of the call, their budgets were stable. But as they looked out towards the horizon, they weren't overly optimistic. The second number, 68%, said that it was going to be a very, they were in restricted financial situations already. And as they looked out, they were, they were planning to see budget reductions of anywhere between 5% and 20%. And I think in the case of one State Archives, they were anticipating budgets of, a budget cut of 50%. So that certainly is something that we're going to, COSA's going to be watching very carefully. We know you are all going to be watching very carefully. But it does, it does cascade into COSA as well. And we want you to know that we're concerned and we're watching. A chunk of the calls revolved around, what else? COVID-19 and the pandemic. And so we gathered quite a lot of feedback from all of you around what you were doing at the time of the call and what you, your plans were for reopening. We know that a few archives never closed. Others of you had partial staff and others closed completely. Of course, the big, the big question was how do we reopen to the point of being able to let, to let patrons come in and do work? So, so the, out of all of that conversation, there are three big areas. And the first one is just this notion of what the, what the State Archives office looks like going forward. Many, many people are still working from home. And more than one State Archives reported that it looked as though there would be some permanency to some of that work from home, that not everyone would be coming back into an office as they had in the pre-COVID days. And that prompted one State Archivist to say, you know, we may really need to rethink the entire notion of what an office looks like and how it runs. As mentioned a little earlier, once the pandemic hit and people kind of got their feet back on the ground, so much, of course, face-to-face training, face-to-face programming just stopped. And then the, then the attention was turned to trying to move more of that online. That's going to continue. I think one of the, probably one of the pluses that has come out of the pandemic is the amount of online activity that's happening and that will continue to happen. And a number of State Archives reported that they're just going to continue to do more and more online activities. And then the third big COVID area was about reopening, which is everybody's challenge. And many people talked about how they were going to, how they needed to reconfigure their spaces, make those spaces safe, not only for staffers but also for the public. A couple of, well, more than a couple, I think, of State Archives reported that they were having difficulty getting ahold of PPE and of course, doing all of the, installing of Plexiglas, quarantining records, and the need to be flexible and adaptable as the pandemic continues to unfold. That prompted one State Archivist to say, setting expectations has become very important, not only for staff but for the public as well. We also asked about the kinds of research that you would like to see COSA pursue over the next year or two. And it's not surprising that one of the top responses to that was advocacy. Given, given the budget scenarios, given everything that- Given the budget scenarios, given everything that state archives are attempting to do in terms of reopening, working with their governments, they really felt that COSA had an important voice and role to play here in terms of providing information to state archives to use in their advocacy work, to really make, help you all make the case for the importance of state archives. And secondly, our members want to see us, of course, continue our programming, our training, and so that, and you've all have given us some great ideas as to what you'd like to see from us there. Workforce development issues in a post-COVID environment is another area that we'll be looking at, and project and research collaborations with public and private partners will continue as well. I do want to say that several state archivists requested that COSA do some serious research around how state archives have handled the COVID-19 pandemic. And we are preparing to continue to gather information. We've got a lot of information already, thanks to the calls to the states, but also those regular COVID-19 calls that the state archivists have been involved with. And we're talking about preparing some sort of a white paper that would document what has been going on so that you all have a reference for now but also in the future. So, I think that that pretty much sums up and gives you kind of the high-level view of what we heard this year. And I just, again, want to thank you all for participating in the calls and, of course, with COSA Board for taking up the responsibility of conducting those calls. It truly is a, it truly is a unique activity in association land, so I think it's a really wonderful thing. So, thanks, Jody.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you for all the great, the great synopsis there. There's a lot of really good information and it really highlights the strengths, as you say, of that task that we have. And just on a personal note, I really enjoy those conversations, and I think they took on a lot more importance this year because of everything that was happening and just the importance of communicating with each other and sharing how to deal with some of this stuff. And certainly, those Thursday meetings were very, very helpful. I'm very happy to hear that we're going to put together a white paper related to all of that. I think it will be extremely helpful. Thank you. We have one more report on the Siri, from the Siri folks. So, Alan and Alejandra, would you like to give us the report?
Yes, thank you, Jody. This is Alan Ramsey. I'm here with Alejandra Dean. We're the co-chairs of the State Electronic Records Initiative Siri Steering Committee, excuse me. And so, you just can't manage this. Oops, wrong way. There we go. So, I'm going to provide some updates on the subcommittees. I first want to thank all of the steering committee members who are the co-chairs and chairs of the steering committee and other interested members and all of the members from your staff, staffs, archive staffs, state archives staffs, that have put in a lot of hard work this past year and dedication, and we've done a lot of things, both in the system committee work and for the MLS grant, and keeping our work going, especially during the pandemic. And so, I'm just going to report on what the subcommittees are doing. So, Advocacy and Outreach wrapped up their Spotlight Article Series with a few articles, which can be found on the COSA website, and they did some Spotlight Articles on irrecolored identification, description, and preservation, which was earlier in the year from the state archives of Florida, create access to metadata program at the Massachusetts Archives, Nevada's governor's transition, and processing preserving governor's office emails using predictive coding tools. They have since moved from doing Spotlight Articles to looking at reusing that material and how best they can move forward doing that and moving into other ways of doing work. One thing they're working on at the moment is a op-ed piece that we'll be looking at and putting forward. And then they also have been doing a lot of great work with the social media posts around electronic records issues and putting those together and also pre-stated to the other subcommittees that have also submitted suggestions for those as well. And then Electronic Records Day, which, as a reminder, we just had this in our last meeting, is coming up on October 10th, 10-10-1010. So, we're working through those initial discussions on what Electronic Records Day will, sort of what we're going to do, which is we're going to focus in on working, since a lot of us are teleworking and our state agency staffs are doing the same thing, sort of how to manage records in that environment and things around telework and that issue with, you know, how to keep all those records together since we're sort of all not, well, we're not all not in the office anymore. So, look for more information to come soon on that, and of course, that's part of Archives One in October as well. So, the Education Program Committee has been working on their webinar series, which they just had one on the Move It Project earlier this week, and had a bunch of different ones. I won't go through all those, but, you know, around email preservation, fundamental or digital processing, programming, how to preserve social media accounts, which is, and topics of that nature. And there's, so as I mentioned, the Move It one earlier this week, and then an upcoming webinar now available, New Resources for Digital Records on September 14th, which will, or September 15th, excuse me, which will review all of the great work done during the implementation of the access project with, work with our partners, which Alejandra will talk about more coming up. They've also been working on an educational video series theme around electronic records processing and so various topics. And so, look for this series to come out. We, with the pandemic, with people being out of the office, the work didn't stop on the series, but so the scripting and outlining continued, but the video production has run behind. So, look for a bunch of those to be coming out on topics of arrangement, description, metadata, tools, file formats, rights and protections, and much more. And they've also worked on education and programming. Subcommittee's also worked on a few, or has a few in the works and has put out at least one standalone video, which is on Bitrot, which was done in the last year. And then Tools and Resources, actually, before I get too far ahead, back up one real quick minute. Education and programming has been overseeing the videos, but I just want to mention that all the subcommittees have been doing a lot of great work on that, bringing together the scripts and the outlines and review, and then the steering committee doing the reviewing of those videos and materials. Now, moving on to Tools and Resources. As always, work continues on the Resource Center, adding resources. Again, please, if you have resources on workflows or things that you've put together, policies, please submit them. It's very easy. Just go to the COSA website, to the Resource Center, and you can submit. You don't need to log in. And the committee continues to do really great work to make sure that the Resource Center has up-to-date information, that the links stay valid, that we find information. And we wouldn't be where we were without Carol Cusman's really great work and great that we have her. So, I thank Carol for all of her ongoing dedication to making sure that the Resource Center remains a really good resource. And then Tools and Resources also has started to work on the next. I know we did one about two or so years ago now, I think it was, on best practices for digitization projects. So, we're actually working on the second one, which is going to be around best practices for applying for grants, how to get you up to the point of submission. And so, that, look for that to be coming out later this year. And I think with that, I will pass it to Alejandra.
Thanks, Alan. Hi, everyone. I'm Alejandra Dean. I'm the Assistant Digital Archivist at the Chief of Archives and also the Siri Steering Co-Chair, along with Alan. I'm going to provide a quick update on the Siri Implementing Access Grant. For context, Implementing Access: Guiding the Creation, Preservation, and Use of Electronic Records is a project that was made possible through a national leadership for library grants from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, and that started in 2017. So, this three-year effort is actually going to end in September, and it's currently in the stages of being wrapped up. The project developed a number of resources, reports, and best practices materials that were produced in collaboration with a number of different partners, and I will name them here. The National Governors Association, the National Association of State Chief Information Officers, the National Association of Secretaries of State, and the Chief Officers of State Library Agencies. During the period from August of the last year to this past July, so July 2020, over a dozen of these deliverables were released, and I, from 2019, called One is Information, Misinformation, and that covers five tips on assessing information online. COSA's File Format Guidelines, that was published this past January, and that goes over evaluating file formats for preservation, and it also includes a handy chart on common file format choices for preservation. A guidance document on public records, open records, and restricted records, and that was released this past February. And that was co-created with the National Association of Secretaries of State. An infographic called When to Trust Your Eyes: How to Catch an Altered Image, and that was a collaboration with Mass and COSLA that was published this past April. Social Media as State Public Records, published in May, and that details survey results on how state, territory, and the District of Columbia archives organize, retain, collect, and manage state government social media records. And then, most recently, an explainer called Blockchain for Archives, SAQ, which was released this past July. All of the deliverables I just mentioned are available on COSA's website under Access Grant Products, and there's a link on the slide here as well. And a major component of this grant was to engage and collaborate with partners, and so Siri will continue working with its partners to produce documents after the grant period. The next Siri webinar, which is scheduled for Tuesday, September 15th, so mark your calendars, will provide an overview and presentation of the access grant from Michelle Gallinger, and she'll be taking a deeper look at all of the products that were created as part of the grant and take a deeper look at some of the documents that I just mentioned. Finally, I'll provide an update on Toward a Common Understanding: Insights on Inter-Agency State Electronic Records Transfer. This was a Preservica-supported survey and analysis of the growing backlog of electronic government records held by agencies and in centrally managed systems that haven't been transferred yet over to their designated preservation repositories. The final report from this project was released last December, so December 2019, and it's also available under that access link that is included in the slide here. This report comes with a companion checklist for guidance on electronic records transfers called the State Inter-Agency Electronic Records Transfer Checklist. And this project, the Toward a Common Understanding project, informed a new Siri initiative that Alan mentioned called Move It. Move It stands for Modeling Viable Electronic Information Transfers, and that is also a collaboration with Preservica but also with AVP. And one of the major findings from Toward a Common Understanding was that there is a lack of consensus on protocols for transfer. So, in order to better understand the transfer process and standards for transfer, Move It has established a group of superlative electronic records transfer examples representative nationwide and with different types of records that will serve to determine success factors for transfer and will inform the creation of tools that COSA's membership can implement to enhance their own practices. So, Alan mentioned that Siri had a webinar on Move It, I think it was last week. So, if you're interested in learning more, you can check back on the webinar's page for that recording. And that was, that webinar was given by Nick Canizo, who's the project manager for Move It, and he did a comprehensive overview of what that project has already accomplished and where it's going. So, that concludes our Siri update, and I guess I'll pass this over to Tom for the Q and A session.
Hello, everyone. I'm just going to advance this slide. First, I want to say thank you to all of the volunteers that make COSA operate so well and so effectively. Just to review who our various program or committee chairs are, Steve Murray from Alabama and Jody Foley from Montana will be co-chairing our advocacy committee this coming year. Sean Rounds and Kathy Popovich, Sean from Minnesota and Kathy from Illinois, will continue to co-chair the Education and Training Committee. Steve Excel and Lizette Pelletier will be co-chairing the Development Committee, as they have for at least the past year. Jody Foley, as the immediate past president, will be chairing the Awards Committee, and Eric Emerson, as the incoming vice president, president-elect, will be chairing the Nominating Committee. I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues, Eric Emerson, who's coming in as the vice president, president-elect, and Jamie Awalt from Tennessee, who will be joining us as the Secretary Treasurer for the next year. We are very grateful for the opportunity to work with you all and to help move COSA through the next year and to help set the stage for continued success of this great organization in the face of what's going to be some very challenging times in the coming few years. Thank you very much to Alan and Alejandra for their great leadership of the Siri Steering Committee. The other folks that are helping out with our very successful Siri program, Bonnie Weddell from New York, who's just down the hall from me right now, Catherine Behringer from Maryland, chairing, or co-chairing the Education and Programming Committee, Suzanne Stanislawz from Pennsylvania, and Nick Canizo, who are co-chairing the Tools and Resources Committee. And then Christian Skipper and Patsy Mitchell, Christian from Maryland and Patsy from Tennessee, who co-chair the Siri Advocacy and Outreach Committee. COSA is successful because of the dedication and hard work of all of these volunteers, and we are so grateful to all of you for all that you have done. And for those of you who are out there who aren't engaged, there is plenty of opportunity. Please consider joining one of these committees, reaching out to one of these folks who you see, whose name is on the screen here, because we need, we need your input, we need your support, we need your brains, and we need your energy. So, please, don't hesitate for a nanosecond in saying, yes, I want to be part of that. You'll benefit a lot and we will benefit tremendously, and the profession will benefit tremendously from your participation. While COSA has all these volunteers and a lot of folks doing things, we wouldn't be as successful as we are without the continued support of our sponsors and funders. as successful as we are without the continued support of our sponsors and funders. You've heard from Ancestry Today, but we're going to have a tug of war over who's controlling the slides. But our sponsors and funders who have supported our organization so much, we are so grateful. Many of you are on this, as part of this work session today, and so thank you to all that you do to support our work and support State Archives in general and archival work in general. So without you, we wouldn't be where we are. And so, we continue to value and benefit from your ongoing support. So now, without further ado, I'll throw this open to questions and answers, and well, at least questions. If we can't make up the answers fast enough, you might have to call us back. But any questions or comments? I'm going to open up the chat to see if there's anything coming through there.
Well, Lizette has her hand raised, so I bet if we call on her, she can unmute and she might have a comment or a question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
That was an accidental hand raise. We had a tornado warning about 10 minutes ago, and when I went downstairs to the basement, I must have bumped my hand. But everything's cool here, I'm fine.
Okay. And the tornado has passed?
I guess so. It's much calmer outside.
All right, good.
Alan, did you do your presentation during the tornado warning?
I wasn't aware of any here, but we're in separate counties, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm at home right now, and he's in Hartford.
Anyone else? Raise your hand or just let us know if you have a question, comment?
Tom, this is Barbara. I'd just like to put in another plug to follow what you said about volunteering for a committee or becoming involved. I mean, I know everyone has, you know, you're probably working 150% already, but why not work 160% and come and work with some of your colleagues on some issues that we're working together in COSA on? So if you're interested at all in volunteering, let one of the committee chairs know or the executive committee, or let me know if you have more questions.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Well, unless there are some other questions, and what's great about the modern world is we have telephones and we have the postal system and even email, which is a new thing that people are using more and more. So if you've got questions, again, please don't hesitate to talk to any of the folks on any of these COSA committees, Barbara, or any of the folks on the committees. So please, with that, I think we might be just about set with the chair's work session. And again, thank you to everyone who presented. Thank you to Jody for her service and continued service and for leading us through today's conversation. And we will probably see many of you, hopefully all of you, on an upcoming SIRI webinar or a COSA NARA webinar or any of the other activities that we have. Where's the Cape? I think the Cape is somewhere in transit. Yes, yes. I live in Albany, New York, and the mule only comes in like once a month with the mail and the other supplies that we need, so it'll be a little while.
It looks like we had a comment from John DeYoung, just from FamilySearch. Thank you to all members of COSA for the work you are doing to preserve and protect your records. FamilySearch stands ready to assist you in preserving and protecting your most important genealogically significant records. I just thought I'd point that out. Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you.
You probably won't read these things that are in the comments that several people are thanking you for your presidential year. She wasn't going to read that, but I think she deserves applause for a great year.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It was actually quite un-given the circumstances. I love working with everyone, and it was an interesting year to do that service. And I just know we're all going to be fine, we're going to work well together, and Tom's just going to do a great job, and the next year will be better. It will be better.
Well, thank you, Jody.
And there was, here's a question from Jim Hemphill. He's wondering, are we going to have remote work-from-home standards or best practices developing in response to COVID-19? We're working on a white paper, Jim, to sort of capture what we've done so far and the lessons that we've learned. And then one of the SIRI Tools and Resources Committee is writing a list of best practices for records management and record keeping when you're working at home, so we should have that pretty soon. The white paper may take a little bit longer, but we'll have a best practices document sooner.
Going once, going twice? Okay. Well, folks, enjoy the rest of your afternoons, and for those of you in the path of the weather, be safe, and for all of us, take care of yourselves, take care of each other, and take care of all the people around you. Bye-bye, everybody.